... Is that my talk more being in order to stand for a pledge?
I pledge the allegiance of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, the earth and heaven.
My friend Joe will not be with us tonight due to another commitment. All right, can I get the approval of the minutes of April 16?
Servo.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Motion carried. Get the motion to accept the financial report and payment bills.
Servo. Second.
I have the motion in second. Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Motion carried. Yeah, proclamation. Present proclamation Kids to Parks Day. Whereas the National Park Trust has designated May 17th, 2014, as a fourth annual National Kids to Parks Day. And whereas the National Kids to Parks Day empowers and encourages children and their families to get outdoors and visit American parks, whereas it is important to induce a new generation of national parks to offset the decline in park attendance over the last decade, whereas we should encourage children to lead the more active lifestyle to combat the issues of childhood recency, diabetes, and hypertension, and whereas National Kids to Parks Days opens all children and adults across the county country to encourage a large and diverse group of participation, and whereas the National Kids to Parks Day will broaden children's appreciation for nature and the outdoors. Now therefore, I, Joe, have developed a son by virtue of authority best me as mayor of the town of Elkton on behalf of the board commissioners and citizens of our community to hereby proclaim to participate in the National Kids Day to Parks Day and encourage residents of Elkton and the surrounding area to invest the time on May 17th, 2014 to take the children in their lives to enable the park, state or national parks. So in witness thereof, we have done two of our seven hands and seal this seventh day of May 2014. Do I have a motion to accept?
Servo.
I'll serve second. Any questions? All those in favor? Aye. Motion carried. Okay, Louis.
On that note, I think Dan Handley told me that they should have the dog park open tomorrow because they had to clean up all that debris and everything, so metal park will be open soon too. They have a lot of debris take out of there. First item I have is the PNC loan.
Excuse me, that you mentioned, are you talking about another parks going to be open on both sides?
I don't know. I was out there and there's still a lot of debris on the west side and I'll find out more where they get it.
So you're saying where the dog park, that side is going to be open, out this side?
Yeah, they cleaned that up.
Okay.
The, a lot of discussion over the last few months about refinancing has come to fruition and on the April 22nd, 10:00 AM, we met with PNC bank official Steve and I, Mayor and Mr. Wilson, and settled made a settlement on the loan. The principal amount was a million four hundred eight thousand three ninety six fifty two. We got a loan interest at 2.35 percent, pre-disabled 3.62 percent, loan period sixty months. The monthly payment will be twenty-four thousand nine hundred two dollars and twenty-eight cents. We estimate a savings of approximately forty-three thousand dollars from the term of the loan from the previous loan amount that we had. So that refinancing has been completed. Next item I have is the annexation resolution. This was introduced on the 16th, excuse me. After the 16th, on the next day, I sent the resolution and the annexation plan to the county board commissioners, to the county planning department, to the Maryland department planning. April 12th, the town received a letter from Terry Moore indicating that because the zoning, proposed zoning and existing zoning were compatible, they did not have to grant consent, so they have no objection to the zoning. The annexation publication was on the 23rd and the 30th because it's less than 25 acres and it only has to be advertised two times. The public hearing is scheduled for the 21st. At that time, 7:30, we'll have a public hearing. If the board adopts it at that point, it will become effective on July 5th. Notify the county clerk of the circuit court and the Maryland department of the latest services. And on July 7th, according to my schedule, will bend the town's charter appendix and the annexation for the parcel 723, 724, 726, and Holly Hall Terrace will be in the town of Elkton.
Okay, now our motion to accept.
If you don't have to take action on this one, okay. The progress report in the Bell Hill Tower. All painting's been completed, the lettering's been completed, all repair work and tank modifications have been completed, the cathodic protection system has been installed, water testing, site restoration, and post-construction soil testing is pending. Contract price was 456,944 dollars, including three change orders and one 1,400 dollar deduction pit welding that wasn't necessary. Total paid to date, 372,366 dollars. Payment due on payment number five, which will be at the next meeting, will be 38,883 dollars and sixty cents. The retainage is 45,694.40. Seventy-five percent of the project is covered by the community development block grant for 342,708 dollars. Town shares 114,236 dollars. Next time I'll give you a final report as soon as we have the water testing done. I'm sorry? Oh, good, okay. Oh, you just got paid. You just got 206,658 dollars from the state of Maryland towards the, towards that reimbursement.
Good.
Under the grant.
That looks good now with the, it's all nice and pan, with big Elkton on there. Very good job. Good job. Okay, all business.
Before you go to the old business, and I'm just thinking, you know, when you go to refinance or you try to secure money, in the state, in the open meeting law, you can have so many people there and on the board. I'm just wondering, that also makes it understandable that, Louis, if you got all the board members there, but yet you only got one or two representative, another three can't speak, would that deny the fact of the open meeting or the?
The, the board doesn't necessarily have to be at a settlement because they've already had.
No, you missed my point. You missed my point. You missed my point. I said, if all five were there.
You'd have a meeting.
You'd have a meeting, even though you only have one or two that are speaking on your head.
If they're present and it involves town business, it has to be advertised as an open meeting.
Correct. I understand correct. I just asked the question with the word presence, because there's a difference in being present and then there's a difference in being present and being able to speak on behalf.
Now, the, the law would not recognize presence being different from any other reason for you being together as a quorum.
Okay, I'm just asking. But on the other hand, if somebody wanted to give you a loan, then they can come and meet you at the dog park. On the flip side, you can't. See what I'm saying? Go ahead.
No, no, it's not going to be done like a, at worship. It still has to be a meeting to discuss town business. So whether they enact the meeting or we enact the meeting, it still has to be covered in open meetings.
I'm looking for it, I, I.
Home business I had was, we all looked at getting the street light upgraded, the main, Westman Street Parkway. Apparently we signed the requisition application to get some new globes, Granville with ribs, same as those on Main Street, and 150 watt HPS lamps will be installed sometime within the next couple of weeks, so we'll have some better lighting down there and probably bring that section up there that may not be. So that's a good thing. Only thing, other thing was, we saved not only 43,000 dollars with the refinancing, with the new energy thing we approved, we'll be saving 10,000 dollars annually. And I just learned that we also received 99,000 dollars in major facilities fees this past week, so things are really looking up and looking good. That's the only thing I have in all business. Welcome.
I attended the Parks and Rec, the entry site this week and just want to commend the Parks and Rec Department, the, all the people that are at the staff. Just wanted to tell them they've done a great job. Again, nice program. Programged and tripled over the last two or three years. It's really been exciting. Just come and watch. They have to use two days instead of one day anymore to do it, so done a great job.
Well, people.
Yep. And thanks to the town of Elk, I mean, not town, Elkton High School for the use of the facility.
Any other business, Louis?
I have none.
You have?
I just wanted to comment on the cleaning up of the potholes. I think that, that process has been going pretty good. I know that we had quite a bit of potholes and throughout, kind of spread throughout the town, but I see that a lot of them are getting patched up, so I just wanted to commend the guys on working hard on that.
Okay. I don't have a real new business to add here.
No, I haven't.
Try anything.
There's a letter from a lady. She said, "Hi, please keep pushing for the barricades to be placed on Route 40 near the Delaware Avenue exit. It is such a hassle to drive down and then have to navigate back to Route 40 using Whitehall Road." She said, "I highly suggest that a notice be placed on Old Baltimore Pike and Delancey Road so people coming in from Delaware have the option to take Delancey to Route 40. Greatly appreciated." So, Louis, in other words, she was wondering if there could be another, or signage somewhere else.
I'll send a letter to Kenny, Kenny Bender. So it probably had to be a VMS board because they probably wouldn't have it. They had to be a detour. You'd hit the list of detour. I don't think we'd set up two VMS boards and all. I'll send a letter.
Also has some, seems something like down here on Howard Street and Bridge Street. There's a lot of people complaining too about turning on the Bridge Street thing and then go down to Delaware Avenue and go through, but when they hit the Delaware Avenue, they find out they can't.
Well, we could do that because Delaware is ours, so we could put our board there.
Okay, that'd be a good thing to do that. And then?
Louis, I thought something was supposed to be done to the trees outside. Were they supposed to be trimmed back, changed or something, or that's no longer the project outside?
I have to check with Dan. I don't know where we are with that. I know he's kind of.
What was supposed to be done?
I'm sorry?
What was supposed to be done?
I think they were talking about removing them altogether and putting new trees there. It looks so nice.
But sometimes inconvenient too. When you walk through the frames or pile and everything that drops off of there. Beg your pardon?
They're getting too big probably for out there. Probably need to put a different type of tree in. I'll find out from them and see what they can do.
Just got a couple of things. One, Louis addressed earlier, and it was about the park. We've got a lot of walkers that just wanted to get back out to the park and I see some of them are going anyway. Is it, is it basically since it's locked up, is it against the law for them to be out there? Okay, so.
It's not against the law for them to be there. Probably park in a new parking area.
Okay, yeah.
The reason we don't have it open for vehicles is because it's like a mud here when they go in and they tear up everything.
That was the question. They just didn't want to be arrested. All right. And the next thing was, there's a speed bump. That's a street. And it is, the rubber speed bump?
Yes.
That's in disrepair.
They need to be repaired?
And, and the residents are actually asking, since it's, they, they seem to say that it's never in repair, that if it could be replaced with a regular speed, that's the request. So just ask me to look at it, see if that's possible. That's it.
I do have one other question and I've said it over and over. When it floods on Howard Street, Louis, there's still some stagnant water that stays there. Is, is there somebody's responsibility to correct that?
Talking?
Whether it's the health department?
Housing Authority and that space in there?
The space there where the water hangs in there?
Yes.
It's not, we, we don't own it.
I know that.
But I'm not sure how they would remove it short of building a pump in a, some type of pump, sump or something. I, I don't know.
Well, I'm just wondering if there's any repercussion with that water standing because it's.
Could be mosquito, but there's already so many pond, waters ran here, I don't think it'll make any difference, but. I don't have any idea.
And it has the smell when you come in. It's getting, it's, I don't know what comes right that gets.
That's a good point though, especially with mosquito.
While we're trying to look at, I'm not sure, I hear what Mr. Gibbons, Commissioner Gibbons is saying, but before we start looking at pumps, you're so close to the pond, everyone wants to look for a drainage to go to the pond. That maybe, there's a possibility, a drainage that would go to the pond if it is so close to the pond sitting there off of, off of Howard Street, right?
Yeah.
He's talking about the water sitting. You're talking about pump?
The housing authority and it used to be an active, a fellow coordinator.
Just a suggestion, I'm just.
I'm not sure. I, I can't answer the question. Some of the elevations, where we discharge to, whether we need a discharge permit, all kinds of alternatives.
So there's no law mandating that the property owner to remove that water?
I'm aware of.
Mr. Litzenberg.
Bob Litzenberg, 105 Walnut Lane. I want to give you, Commissar, some pictures here to look at. Just stand the line if you will. Before I get into that, what do you do when the five of you were in Ocean City on one of your conferences? Does that have to be advertised as a meeting, open meeting?
No, it wasn't convened by them or town business. It's different.
These are pictures of my backyard or my side yard. I don't want to get into that as to what we're talking about here. Start in the very beginning with this thing. I've got a neighbor, which is what you see from the back of that property there. She has a dog. She doesn't take very good care of the dog and someone in my neighborhood, which I knew did, called the animal control about the dog not being taken care of in the winter time. So she came over to our house, got in a verbal situation with my wife, and my wife, as most of you know, is a very easygoing person, unlike me. Anyhow, she told her, said, "We did not call about your dog," which we did not do. I could not get that through her head about it. So when I heard, heard her discussion, I went out and I told her, I said, "We fed your dog last summer and gave your dog water last summer when the dog didn't have any water in that heat." And she said, "If you ever come on my property again, I'll have you arrested for trespassing." I said, "Okay, it goes both ways. You keep your kids off of my lot." So I figured it'd be enough of it and I wouldn't hear any more from her. The next day or so, animal control came and took the dog. So then we get a, get a note on my door that says, "The boys cried themselves to sleep." "Are you, you are a champion of none." This is what was put on my door. Now, I don't know for sure he's the one that put it there, but I'm pretty sure she did. So then I said, "Well, I'm going to put a fence up so I don't have to look at this mess." And you see the, you see what I'm looking at. Charlie went up to look at what I'm talking about. Well, I went to, went to Chip to see what I could do with this situation, okay? He said, "The front of your dwelling faces Walnut Lane. This is considered the first front and has a required 30-foot setback," which I understood. "The part of your yard that faces Gilpin Avenue is considered a second front and has a 15 yards, 15-foot setback. With the front of your dwelling facing Walnut Lane, I do not have a rear building line that is perpendicular to the property line adjacent to Gilpin Avenue. The rear building line is used to determine the extent of which a six-foot solid fence may extend towards the front porch. Due to this unique situation and the intent of the zoning ordinance to keep front yards open, I had to..." He, we disagreed to disagree. He could understand my situation, but being a, a side yard, now, the 50 foot that I own back there is a non-conforming lot. I can't build on it, can't do anything on it. But it faces Gilpin Avenue. So I went out and I got, got the permits to build a fence. Now, I can build, I've got 768 dollars tied up in this thing so far. Building permit, 42 bucks. The fence, 315.63, and shrubbery, 16 different shrubs here for 311 dollars. And look, Bob Webb located the markers because I knew where the markers were, but one of them was on the fence line and it was actually over into her property, which is my property, but anyhow, the fence line on that. And I was told I could put a four-foot high fence up with 50 percent visibility through the fence, which means I can have, well, you're very familiar with this, Charlie, a two-foot wide picket, but I'd have to have two, two inches wide in between so and so to make it 50 percent through. I said, "Well, if I gotta do that, that's what I'll do." Well, I said, "I'll put up some shrubbery." Well, then again, I can put shrubbery, but the shrubbery can't be more than four feet. But it has to be see-through shrubbery, right? I said, "Well, what about all these other places in town that have side yards that have fences and shrubbery that all the way to where we make big?" Well, that's the way the ordinance is. Now, last summer, grass in her backyard was this high, and Dick will tell you that because he lives next door to me like that. I was cutting underneath of the fence, which was her fence, not mine at the time, under her fence. Got tired of that. I didn't call the town, somebody called the town about the grass being this high. The town came up to cut the grass because they sent her notices, she wouldn't cut it. They came up to cut the grass, they wouldn't go inside the fence because the dog was there, which is understandable. The dog is a nice dog, but they were afraid the dog might bite where it may be. So they're on my property, cutting underneath of her fence and left the debris that's this high when it drops over there. I said, "Who's going to pick that up? You got, that's not our job." I mean, I can understand their situation, it's not their job to pick it up, so I'll pick it up. Handed that up to here with this situation. Now, in the backyard where we are, and we have family functions out there, this is, this is, this is where we have the family functions. Last year also, she had a pod and you saw the pod, right? No permit for the pod, was out there for six months probably, and whether she was fine for that, I don't know. But I'm personally tired of having to abide by ordinances. Sometimes I don't want to, but I do it anyhow. But she does abide by anything and I'm the one that's suffering. The other people in the neighborhood come to me about different issues, but nobody will come in here because I seem to be the go-to person. That's the situation with that thing there. Where was I going for this? Okay.
Tell me.
Wait a minute, let me finish while I got my brain thought or I'll forget what I'm talking about. You've all got it written down. The trash cans, as you can see, are right in the front yard. Now, that fence that you see, the new fence, is the one I just put up. They don't have the shrubbery in there yet. I mean, I've got it in there now, but I didn't have it there then. Those trash cans sit out there from Monday until Monday, right there in the front of that house. Now, I do know there's an ordinance about, about having trash cans in the front because of the town, as what you live in, you wouldn't have trash cans sitting in front of your house all the time. That's not done. The ordinance is there for that. She does abide by that and you can see all the stuff that's over there. Now, what else was I going to say? Okay. Well, Chip was up there. He said, "What's going on inside the house?" I said, "I don't know. She's doing construction in there, been doing this for at least a year." The far side of the house, which you can't see, is this, this construction debris where they raise the window and throw everything out that side, that's over next to where Fears has used to live. You guys would know, Earl would know where Fears used to live and so would Charlie. But anyhow, I don't know whether, my mind's a unique situation, which the building inspector will tell you that. But in those kind of situations, I'm still going to be looking at this trash unless she is made to clean it up. Now, there ought to be a special exception in my case where I can at least put a four-foot solid fence up so I don't have to see through all that, because we're sitting around, you don't see it upon four-foot fences like that. But there's nothing in that order to protect me. Everything protects her because she doesn't abide by anything. Charlie, what did you see when you went up there to look at that?
The same as we just mentioned.
Well, that's what I was going to say. I was up there the other night and I saw it too, Bob, and I.
I don't think anybody on this board or anybody around here would want to.
No.
Look at that.
I don't even know how you would get in, even get inside the house.
Well.
It's so bad that you can't even get up there.
That's, what she does inside that house is her business, but what I have to look at is my business, whatever. Now, that's, that's my problem there, okay?
Did, when you talked to Chip, Mr. Bronwell, did he suggest any special exceptions, any other avenues?
Yeah, he said, he said, "If you don't agree with my decision," he said, "you can appeal it for 358 dollars." A check for 358 dollars. I said, "Well, I'm not going to appeal the nagging one thing because if your interpretation is this way, I'm sure that the zoning board of appeals will probably look at it the same way." I mean, and I wanted to talk to, talk to Jean and she was not in that day. She was on vacation and Terry was out someplace else, so couldn't sit down and talk to them. Chip's doing what he's told me, what he's doing. He's, he's going by what your ordinance is reading and he can sympathize with me and I can sympathize with him, but I'm the one that's living there.
Right.
On that situation. And other areas in town are the same way. 250 East Main Street, right down the street from Norman. The front of that place looks like a pig's thigh also. Dave Willis owns two houses right next to that. And Dave, I checked with him yesterday before he made this statement. He's been to the town on numerous occasions about trying to get that house strength cleaned up. In the back part of it, there was a, a fire escape that had been condemned years ago. They finally just tore that down last week or the last two weeks and the debris's still in the backyard. I don't know where the code officers are here, but evidently not, the code officer himself, whoever enforces it, is not doing a very good job. You come into town and you, you've been to town and you see, and this is hard for them to, hard for them to enforce, but when you come into the town of Elkton, a lot of porches, front porches, you'll see lawn, and you'll see living room sofas and see chairs and so forth. I mean, this is not good for the town. Right across the street, where Robbie Alt used to have that property there, you've got three satellite dishes up on the roof is where they're posted today. The double house right next door, where's the satellite dish? It's attached to the first floor. It's attached to the front porch on the floor. Now, it hadn't been that many years ago, and Norman can probably remember this, when they weren't even allowed to have a satellite dish, and George Dosch was going to have classes from Detroit satellite it in for his employees, and they couldn't do that because he didn't have satellite dish, they were not allowed to have. Am I correct or not?
Correct.
Yeah. So there's, there's so many things that, that the town needs to be changed and it doesn't seem like it, it just seems like it gets worse instead of better. I mean, I don't know what can be done about my situation, but when I had a real estate license 30 years ago, whatever may be, if I was going to sell that, show my property, I certainly wouldn't do, buy this property to sell my property, to show it as a listing. I certainly would not do that because anybody's looking at this neighborhood, say, "This neighborhood's going down the tubes." Everybody in the neighborhood maintains their properties except this one person and she could care less. She could care less. Earl, where you are, you're on a corner lot. If yours was reversed like mine is, you wouldn't be able to put a fence up, a privacy fence through your backyard either, because it would be on a side. You don't, you don't understand what I'm saying? And I don't, I don't know what the answer is to mine other than her being made to maintain and abide by the ordinances that are in town. Now, whether there's an ordinance now about trash, I don't know. But I do know there is one about trash cans and they're not supposed to be in the front yard, they're supposed to be stored in the back. And I do know that ordinance. Now, I purchased that property back in 1979 from Charlie Heaster for protection to myself. Earl and, and Charlie would remember, remember Nordie Sigmund because Nordie lived right back on me. And that lot was available from, from Charlie Heaster. And I said, "Nordie, you want part of that?" I said, "I don't want any more grass to cut." So anyhow, I bought the lot for protection, not from Nordie, because there was no fences there then, but I bought it in case something like this might happen. I'm glad I did. Because if Nordie had bought it, when that house was sold, she would be right in my back, my backyard then. The 50 feet that I own is a right, but it was, it's actually supposed to be a right of way, which they wouldn't let them have access to 279. If I didn't buy that, that lot would go, where Nordie Sigmund used to be, where this girl's lot is, and it would be right up almost against my, my pool fences now. That's what I'd be looking at. So unfortunately, I did that. I don't know what else I got to, here, I guess that's about it. Let's, let's see, what else do I have? But I don't know what can be done, but I think something should be done because I'm not the only one in the neighborhood that sees what I say.
When I served on the zoning board, that's been some years ago, it seemed you apply for permit for the fencing, and you don't, never get a chance to address what the board either agrees or disagrees on. It seems to me that that special exception should be requested from the board, on the zoning board, and then you should be able to comply by that without an extra charge. I don't see that three hundred and some dollars being addressed because you're challenging it. That's an exception that you have a different circumstance or a unique one, and because of that, it should be brought to the board's attention that this is not just an average issue or situation, but yet you would like to address the main concern with the site, and I'm asking for a special exception. The board should be able to agree or disagree on that without charging you any extra money.
I agree with you, but the three hundred, the money is, because you have to advertise it. When you appeal it, it has to be advertised in the paper, and that's where the money comes in. It has to be advertised in the paper.
But you're not, a repeal, and you're asking-
You asked for a special exception, which you do.
I didn't ask for a special exception, but I don't think there is one in this case.
Yes, that's a special exception, which you asked for.
And that's advertised.
It's gotta be advertised, right? Even in this case, his decision, I'd have to ask for a special exception, it has to be advertised, right?
Yeah, they can advertise it. You need, if you're going to, on a fence, you should come in and ask for a special exception as compared to appealing the decision, and let the board decide whether or not you have a special situation there.
This fence is already up. We've already spent that money on it. I'm not gonna put another one up, unless I might be told, I'm disheartened enough that I would put the fence up and do the other one someplace else, but I mean, it's-
But then if they deny-
Any situation, I understand that, and somebody else might have that same situation sometime.
For the special exception, then if they deny, then you have the right to go ahead and appeal it. That's where your charge would come in, that's the way I would-
But I wouldn't have told that. I mean, I looked at this and so forth, and I can see, and I can understand what he's saying. I can understand what he's saying, because that's where the ordinance is read. I've got the ordinances, everything right here. But anyhow, that's all I have. I just hope somebody can do something to correct the-
Well, I can tell you, we just-
You guys don't know where Dogwood Road is, but I was born on Dogwood Road. I moved from there when I was a little kid. I don't wanna move back to that track.
May I interject something?
The tiger, we just got a new, uh-
If you have ordinance law, I'm sure you'd force the ordinance. We wouldn't have to go through all this.
We just got a brand-new code enforcer, Bob. We're just hiring a new one on the thing. And then Louis, why can't we get her and cite her for all the ordinances that she's breaking?
Hi, I'm Matt. This is the first time I've heard about it, so I can't answer any questions about Mr. Listen Bird's thing, because if we went to Chip, it's Chip's responsibility. Well, they normally provide notice, and if they fail to respond, they can go to Circuit Court, I mean, I said, Circuit Court summons, issue an order, and have her come to the court, and George, Johnny would tell her she would have to do it, and if she didn't, she'd be in contempt of ordinance, and she'd hire Mr. Wilson to defend her.
I bet that, I would have it down, no.
I think that's okay.
It's a simple thing.
Looks like there are a lot of violations out there.
To go to the courts and look at that.
Well, I don't know what the violations are about the trash, but you can see those pictures once there, but I do know she's in violation with the trash cans. I do know that.
There are a lot of violations out there. I mean, I did see it the other night myself, so have him go out there and-
They've been out there. I think they've already issued her a letter.
Oh, we did issue her a letter? All right, as long as they issue her a letter.
And that's what we start that way.
Just keep an eye on the backyard. It hasn't been cut yet. The front yard hasn't been cut either, which we really need to- That'll happen where it'll be like this. We're on a septic system there. She's on town water, but on septic system, and the first time I smell anything like that coming, which happened years and years ago, I'm gonna be in here again, you got the health department, because this is a ridiculous way we're living out there.
There's dog, uh, dog feces back there. Do they clean up the backyard with the dog feces?
No, she doesn't do any of that.
Then we can notify the board of health.
The people right back of her have a dog, and they, their yard is kept clean, they pick up everything. This particular lady works at the University of Delaware, and this dog we're talking about's a nice dog. He's a rep, and a nice dog. Farts all night long. She can't sleep because of the dog, and she's gonna complain to somebody about it. Doesn't bother me, because everybody who's in the front of the house, hers is on the back way through the back door.
Did you say that somebody's contacted the dog SPCA or the Buddies for Life to have them, because they can come out there and serve a summons on her?
Well, they took the dog. That's what I'm talking about. That's where I got this notice from her.
She, the dog was out there just Monday night.
Well, she's got a dog box for the dog now. Before, the dog, all winter long, didn't have any place for the dog to go into. Two years ago or three years ago, Dick will tell you the same thing, I took a child's playhouse over there, put it in her yard for the dog. Didn't give a thank you. I don't care about a thank you, or whatever. She, she, she just, she's a different type person all the time. She's different. Thank you for your time.
DJ?
Amy. How you doing? Andrew Van Rynen, fiber law court. Being a rookie at this election thing, I have a few questions. First of all, parking. I have, I want clarification on the parking. My understanding is it's a hundred feet, and we'll all be parked right out front here.
Do you mind if I answer?
I was here for the, for the election thing, and I understood everything, but when I left, the only question I had was, as far as the parking, is there a particular time that the parking starts? Is there a lottery system of who parks where? First come, first served? Can I park there a week in advance, camp out? As a whole, is to sleep there in a-
Bottom line, election hearing has to occur a hundred feet from this door. There won't be any entrance, there'll be an exit on North Street, but that will not be an entrance. So a hundred feet from that door is out in the parking lot, there'll be an area that I have marked off for candidates to park their vehicles. So it's parking, you can pull your vehicle.
Starting at what time?
The night before, it's your call.
Okay. I need to talk about signs. I need clarification on campaign signs, where they can and cannot go. My understanding is they cannot go on public property, be it the town property or the county property. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Now, I have some issues with that. I, for the most part, know exactly where all of my signs are, and if I get word that a sign has been moved, I go out there and find out why, or I ask my volunteers, "Why did you move it?" A lot of the signs that I see are on public property, be it the town or be it the county. What repercussions for the person running are there right now?
You okay with the answer?
Well, really-
Um, it's, if you see a sign that's on town property, and you don't have to determine it, we'll, we'll- But if you see a campaign sign that's on public property, let us know, and we'll find out if it's either our property or county or state property or whichever, and we'll go ahead and contact the authority for you. Or if it's us, I'll go ahead and call the candidate and say, "Go do that," which I've done. But I can't know where all the signs are.
No problem. I can give you a list tomorrow.
Yes, I'll be awake tomorrow, and I'll be back on my note.
Okay. And with the signs, one thing, I'm going to pick the number twenty-seven, but I know between twenty-five and thirty of my signs have been taken, either by an act of God, wind blowing real hard, and it's blown away, but I can't imagine that many signs have been taken by an act of God, because usually one of my signs is missing and somebody else's sign is in close proximity. My understanding with that also is that there's a federal law against that. Is that a state or federal law as far as removing somebody's sign?
With all due respect, these questions should be asked to the election school, uh, election board, not us, because we have no control of that. I'm just letting you know that, because we can go out to the election board and talk over these questions, but-
Again, I'm a rookie at running for politics, that's why I-
But she's answering-
Questions should be asked to you.
She's answering them to booth boards, but yet technically, we're not responsible to answer those questions there.
You preempted me, because I was just talking to Michelle. This is not the questions that you get answered by the board here. They have a board of election supervisors here in town that would answer-
Sure, I was there for that one.
Yeah, and all you have to do is send them a few some of these questions or your concerns from Michelle, it would get to that board.
Fair enough. The calendar on the website, there's nothing on the website, on the calendar. There was tonight's meeting on there, but I've been looking, and some other residents have been looking, to find out what future things are happening in and around town. And again, the website's fairly easy to navigate. Some of the emails, there's been issues, trying to email Gene Mitter, and it gets bounced back. But as far as the calendar, who's responsible for updating what's going on in and around town? You?
And Eliot.
The fireworks, there's nothing on the calendar as far as fireworks, and I haven't heard if we actually have the fireworks paid for yet, have we?
That should be on.
The event's scheduled.
It's scheduled, yeah. It's supposed to be July.
It was scheduled last year and then-
July, July fourth, and that part was totally spent.
It was scheduled last year, and then with the rain and stuff, it didn't end up happening.
Well, hoping it wouldn't dry out between now and July fourth.
Well, I'm just wondering about the funding for it, because we had the funding last year for it, and it still didn't, it didn't happen. So I'm just wondering, I know a couple of weeks ago, I heard somebody say that we were in the process of raising all the funds to have that done, and I'm just wondering where we stand with that, that's all.
Who'd ask for donations? Anybody that'd like to donate?
Yeah, we're still trying to raise funds for it.
We're gonna do it anyway.
We're gonna do it, right.
All right.
But it was canceled because of the condition of the fields and all that, barking and everything like that.
All right. The forty-three thousand dollars that was saved, first, my understanding was the loan now is sixty months, but we had less than sixty months left on the way, right?
It was about sixty months. It's still about sixty months.
Okay. The forty-three thousand that we saved, where's the accountability for that, that it had taken nine months? Who holds the accountability for that?
That's why it took that long?
Yeah. And I'm not-
We had, uh, got indication from TNC that they would offer a rate that beat another bank's offer, so unfortunately, it took that long to, to everybody, and all the same, song sheeting everybody together, a lot of period, extended periods of no communication, and by frustration on my part and sort of the board's part, I think it wasn't until I said that we were gonna look elsewhere for it, and that seemed to get the attention.
Plus, my eyes is covered.
Right, there is, they have their attorneys that were reviewing it and were requiring certain documentation that rose to a much higher level than what for now even I thought it would be from the beginning, but it all did eventually get done.
The, we have other debt, I'm assuming, with the renovations to the water treatment plant, is that right?
Right.
Not the water.
The wastewater, I'm sorry, wastewater.
Wastewater.
Right.
Do you know how much that is by chance, just-
Well, it's a one point two million here, it's a four point seven million dollars whole plant was.
Is that something that we could also look into refinancing?
No.
No, that's, the rate's very favorable.
State, we're with the state. Finance the state.
So, flush tax did allow that funding.
All right.
That we all pay quarterly for water bills.
The original contract in redoing the water, or the water tower, was the name Elkton on the water tower at that time? I believe it was, right?
Different style, but it's, yeah.
Right. And then, two weeks ago or so, maybe two meetings ago, we had given more money to the contractor to put the words Elkton back on it?
Yes, nine thousand dollars.
Right.
Seventy-five percent of that's covered by CDBG.
Whether it's covered or not, I was just wondering, in the original contract, when I do a paint job at my job or at home-
Wasn't part of the original contract.
May I ask why?
I don't know.
Who did the original contract?
I'm sorry?
Who read the original contract or approved it?
The-
When you, when you look at the original contract-
The contract's part of a bid package put together by our engineer, and the product protection wasn't in it, and the lettering wasn't in it. But the, if the cost had been put in it, it would've cost nine thousand dollars, whether it was in it or not. So it wouldn't have been any difference. In other words, if it had been in the original contract, it would've just been nine thousand dollars more.
Sure, I understand.
And we still would've paid it. So it wasn't a savings or a loss to us by not having it in the original contract, because that's set price on that work.
I'm familiar with how the bidding process works and stuff like that. My biggest concern is just, just looking at the contract, and if we're gonna put a contract out, it should be the same apples to apples. Then when somebody comes back and asks for more money, it should've been in the first bid, that's all. It's way, that money was already set aside, that we don't need to put any more money away to something else. That's what I'm trying, trying to find out, sir.
Actually, one of the things you should know is that the CEBG loan was for five hundred thousand dollars, so the actual project that we delivered was roughly forty thousand dollars less than the actual, what we anticipated being contracts, and we saved quite a bit of money on that project.
Okay. And, okay. The town seal, I had done some shirts, and I did a lot of investigating. I don't see where our town seal is actually copyrighted, that it looks like it's public domain, that it can be manipulated in any way possible, and there's not a darn thing that the town can do about it. Is that something that we can please check into?
Hmm, it is some copyright, it's public domain, I don't know if any seals are copyrighted. I don't think so, government, I don't even know. Can you, if you could, because it would be proprietary by government. I don't understand the question. The Maryland seals, is it copyrighted?
I know the Maryland seal is. I've checked on that.
I don't know about, I mean municipalities, I don't know.
Michelle, we'll check into it.
All right, thank you. Because I hate for anybody to all of a sudden start manipulating it, that's all. The Naginaw Tower fireworks. Lastly, Walnut Hill, I've talked to a few people, and the bottom part of Bonnie Marie Court, there is still unfinished part of it down there with a lot of standing water. And the unfortunate part is, I found out some information, I went back to talk to this gentleman, and there was a for-sale sign in his yard, and it concerned me. And if somebody moves out of the town because of a job, or they just wanna move to Timbuktu, Montana, because they like that area, is one thing, but when they, they wanna move out of Elkton because they feel that they're not being heard, then I believe that's an issue for all of us. And that's the way this gentleman feels, because he feels that part of that contract with the town, he's a taxpayer, things aren't getting done. He has to pull out of his driveway, which is on an uphill angle to, during the wintertime, a skating rink, because water was standing there. And gentleman across the street, he's backing into it, it's a skating rink. Now, unfortunately, since the road's not finished, it's, the drainage is all plugged up, but I feel that in planning and zoning, there should be some type of way that this should be drained off to all the different retention ponds that they have up there. The gentleman's actually, one of the gentlemen is actually here tonight. He decided, he didn't get here in time to put his name on. I would hope that the panel would listen to him if he wants to talk. But I did talk to Ms. Mitter, and she said that, Mr. George, that you had sent a harsh letter to the developer, and that there was some type of conversation between you and him.
The original two developers are no longer in existence. The current owner is Walnut Hills LLC. We have a PWA pending with them. Once they execute, once they agree to that public works agreement, and the board agrees, they'll have a certain amount of time, actually, at the end of June, to have all the finished reports put on Bynum Marie Lane and Vince Court. So we're working on that.
Thank you. You can write amendments into when one LLC goes out of business, and you want... somebody else wants to take over the development, you can write in amendments to secure that these things are done, right? Something that the first developer has neglected, although he wasn't supposed to, but did neglect, you can still write it in, that the next person buying it has to take care of it, is that wrong? Am I thinking?
If the corporation or LLC, or partnership, whatever it is, is a successor, then the public works agreement is designed to include any work that's not being completed. In the case of Walnut Hills, Walnut Hill LLC, Road LLC, then the... as built for the stormwater pond, the sidewalk, curb and gutter landscaping, and final course of pavement on the road are all included and specified in that PWA to be completed. And a letter of credit, an amount of two hundred and three thousand dollars, went to be posted, in the event that the developer does not deliver on the completion. Those pay us accountable to close on that letter of credit, and we'll complete the work.
All right. And you said that this stuff should be done by the end of June? Is that what I heard?
I heard you say that. I said the agreement was without the developer hasn't signed yet.
And when the developer does sign it, do you notify the community itself, or the HOA, or the property management company?
As soon as the developer signs it, bring it before the board, and the board agrees to it, when we execute that agreement, and then we can notify everybody out there on what's happening.
That's all I have, thank you.
Before you leave, and I know certainly we can't answer the question about it, actually, and I know you talked about signs. One thing about signs, when you put them up, they either stay there, or the weather will damage them and knock them over. Somebody takes... somebody moving one spot to the next, that's the way the sign business goes.
Yeah, it's funny and sad all at the same time, sir.
Yeah, that's part of the run, I guess, you know? You put a sign in someplace and come back, it's gone. You either say good riddance, or you put another one there.
I don't mind competition. I've done that my entire life. My issue is when there are rules set, and the... when there's rules set, everybody should follow them, just like Mr. Listenberg was saying, there's certain ordinances, and there should be some type of accountability at all levels. That's all I'm saying.
Sometimes there may not be competition. Sometimes people are just people, and they're just... put it back or whatever.
True that. Very... Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, delighted to be here this evening. Keith Thompson from seven oh seven Elkton Boulevard. How are you all this evening? Good. Question about flooding. My wife had suggested this, and she knew I was coming here, so I thought I'd bring it up to you. Does the town have any kind of reverse nine-one-one notification for business owners that may be in areas such as Bridge Street or on Howard Street, Delaware Avenue, that are subject to flooding, and the flooding comes to notify the business owners?
No, not right now. Just like that.
All our nine-one-one goes through Cecil County Department of Emergency Services, not the town itself. We don't make calls from here. But I don't know... I think they do have reverse nine-one-one on some things.
There is a reverse nine-one-one available.
Okay, so they could be notified, then, just a matter of implementation.
Well, can we do that if we know something? Can we use that system and let the business people know?
Yes.
You can't use it?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, I've got a client that's the Veterans Hope thrift store that's been... yeah, a third time in two years now. If they'd have known that it was coming, maybe somebody here locally, the manager there lives here locally in the Heights with myself, and she could've probably come over there if she'd have known that. So that would be very beneficial if you could do something like that. Thank you, that's all I have.
Even without the nine-one-one, because of the flood, certainly it might've been coming from the towns, you know who the businesses are, and just have, or put something in place